All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is the City of Treasure Island City Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 18th. If you are joining us remotely, online, or watching us on TV and you'd like to participate in our meeting, you can do so from your computer tablet or smartphone by using GoToMeeting. And in order to do that, you can go to global.gotomeeting.com/join/449375701. Or you can dial in using your phone by calling 224-501-3412 using access code 449375701. If you're joining us on your computer, smartphone, or tablet, just send us a message to let us know which item of the agenda you'd like to speak on, and then we will call on your name and unmute you. If you're joining us by phone, just unmute yourself when we call for public comment and go ahead and speak up. So with that, if everyone could please join me and stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ruth, can you do our roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Next is our approval of the regular and workshop agendas. We have noted that the city manager is requesting to table a few items of business, including item number two, Ordinance 2022-01, first reading to amend the fiscal year 2022 budget; item number 10, approve city manager purchase authority for the purchase of utility relocation services from Duke Energy; and item number 12, approve a contract amendment with New Vista Builders Group for city center construction. Did you have anything else to add?
Nope, those are the only three.
Okay. Does anyone have any issues with approval, approving the agenda without those on it?
No.
Okay, we'll move forward. Next is proclamations, recognitions, and certificates of appreciation. We have the 2022 National Mentoring Month proclamation. And I will go ahead and read the proclamation. So, "2022 National Mentoring Month. Whereas January 2022 will mark the 20th anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to help ensure positive outcomes for our young people. Whereas, the City of Treasure Island, Florida honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas mentoring programs in Pinellas County schools make our communities and our state stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue virtually to ensure that physical distancing does not mean social disconnection. And whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people, and drives positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth of a young person and their relationships with other adults. And whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs, and 27% less likely to start drinking. And whereas almost half of today's young adults report having a mentor in their youth, and those rates appear to have been rising steadily over the past several decades. And whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in Treasure Island. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tyler Payne, on behalf of the entire Treasure Island City Commission, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as National Mentoring Month in the City of Treasure Island." I don't believe the representative from the group that requested this proclamation was able to join us this evening, but I just thought that this was a really important thing for us to recognize in Treasure Island, and particularly during, like it said, during the COVID times, really important for our youth to have those good influences. And I hope everyone on this board, all of our boards, and our city staff can be a mentor in some way to somebody somewhere.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Really quick. Also, in the spirit of mentoring, I just want to put out there that it doesn't have to be an official mentoring program. I mean mentoring can start with taking food to the elderly next door, asking them if they need help taking their garbage cans out. It doesn't have to be for the young, it could be for the elderly. It could even start with just seeing a child on the street and just saying, "How's school going? How's everything going?" Mentoring doesn't have to be, being an educator for 15 years and being close to children-related services, it doesn't have to be formal or official, you don't have to sign on for days or times. It's just about starting that connection with kids and elderly, and during this time of COVID, it's more important than ever. Kids have less connections, suicide rates are up, a lot of people find it hard to talk about, but it is the reality of it. So just even kids in your neighborhood, they might have struggles at home because of parents out of jobs or not where they used to be. So just, I just want to comment on mentoring. It doesn't have to be official and time-sensitive and things like that. It could just start with the daily elderly and kids in your neighborhood, and it could be unofficial.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. All right, I do believe we have a recognition that's not on the agenda. Our city attorney, Jennifer Cowan, would like to introduce our law clerk or intern?
Intern, yes. So it's my great pleasure. Anne, if you want to stand up, this is Anne Simmons.
Hello.
And you can come to the podium to say hello. She's a 3L at Stetson and will be graduating in May. She worked with Hall, Booth, and Smith before, and before law school, worked at the State Attorney's Office. And we are very excited to have her beginning this Thursday, and you'll probably see her on City Hall on Thursdays and Fridays, hopefully, and she'll be working on the project with our land development regulations and the history of those. So, Anne, welcome.
Thank you.
If you all have a need.
Nice to meet you all.
You too. Anything to add?
Um, not really.
Really put you on the spot.
I'm really interested in land use law, and you know, it seems like a really good fit to help out, like redoing the regulations and everything and delving into the history. So I'm actually really excited. It might sound boring to some people, but for me, it's actually spread up my alley.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. As a fellow Stetson Law alum, welcome to the team, and thank you for volunteering to do this.
Yeah, I'm excited to see you all around.
Absolutely. All right, next is public comments for non-agenda items. Do we have anyone in the audience tonight that would like to make public comments for something that's not on our agenda tonight? Anyone online? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to our next item, which is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Toth?
All righty. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say a special thank you to our beautified Treasure Island team. The plants at Roselli look awesome. And then we have upcoming the Isle of Capri yard sale, that's coming up February 11th. And then I'll have a little update on the library construction work that's going on. The new computers system and the computers were installed on Monday. Not really sure if they're totally 100% up and running, they were finishing them off, I think, today. The interior lighting project is nearing completion, and then the outdoor lighting project will be coming underway. The interior doors have all been replaced and installed. Oops. And the exterior door, like any remodel, you know, as in any kind of building that's been here for a while, there was some need when we went to install the new storm doors up in the front and the entryway, there's some new steel supports that were put in or in the process of getting put in for the new exterior doors, and that should be finished this week. And then on to the restroom modification, modernization. And hopefully, we're knocking out the plant, the work on the library coming up. And then also lastly, I'd like to thank our civic association for getting everything together for the yard sale. And the kite festival was really awesome this weekend. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toth?
I had the opportunity last week to meet with the Isle of Palms Board of Directors, and it was good to see people face-to-face again, although they still are not doing their potlucks as they used to do. But it was good to see everyone, and I had the opportunity to get caught up on all the business, as well as to answer all the questions, so I appreciated their invitation, and that's it.
Commissioner Patrick?
Sure. I want to thank Paradise Island Civic Association, they ran a canned food drive the last couple of weeks, it's been a huge success. They donated plenty of canned foods to shelters in need, and also created more community interest in joining your civic association. I think they had over $1,000 in membership, new membership, and we're really excited about that, because the membership's really about just getting your community more aware and involved that we are a community and we do things together, and we want to celebrate that. So kudos to them for having such a successful event twice in the last couple of weeks. Also on Paradise Island, we're going to be increasing some of the lighting on major street areas. That was a request that came from some residents who were concerned that it was maybe a bit dark in some of our main areas, and the city's been very responsive to that, and we'll be trying to work on brightening up some of the areas that were of concern. Also, same thing Commissioner Toth had said, the kite festival was a huge success. A shame that the next day was such bad weather, but the day they ran it was a huge success, and it really got residents excited to kick off the new year with another community event that's so well-received. Sorry, one moment. Also, just wanted to remind, I forgot a lot of requests, as many people do in a new year, they want to know, you know, what volunteer opportunities are available. People are turning over new leaves, setting goals, things like that. Our city has done a great job of responding to our need for a webpage on our city website that specifically speaks to volunteer opportunities. So anywhere across our city, if you have a need or a desire to volunteer, that would be your first place to start with. You can also email any of your commissioners for volunteer opportunities, we can lead you in the right direction for that. And then lastly, just to piggyback on the spirit of mentoring, and because it is a new year for us, 2022, it's a great time to have your kiddos, your grandkids, write down goals for this new year. Writing down goals seems to be another way for them to kind of set some targets for them to achieve, and so just in the spirit of the new year, just, it's a great thing to do with kids. And sometimes we overlook kids, we write our own goals, but we forget to have kids do it. But it's really important for kids, too, just for hope and spirit and motivation, so just wanted to remind everybody about that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wetzel?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the city and the police department for being responsive to the request by residents for the coming storm. We have so many low-lying areas, and being responsive to allow them to move their cars, park in the city lots overnight, received a lot of appreciation for that, and thank you for the quick response on a weekend when everything was coming down, and we have a lot of legitimate concerns when it's high tide, full moon, storm coming, so, and a lot of people have, you know, flashbacks to the storm we had with all the flooding, so appreciate that. And then just that the Sunset Beach bonfire is being postponed until the spring, so it was going to be at the end of this month. That's all.
Great, thank you. I have no report this evening. I did go out to the kite festival, and it was really nice, so it sounds like a lot of us got to go enjoy that and enjoy a nice community event. All right, next is approval of minutes. We have the January 4th, 2022 meeting and workshop minutes to approve. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the January 4th, 2022 commission meeting and workshop minutes.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, any public comment? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. We have no consent agenda this evening, so we'll get right into the items of business. First up is presentation by Duke Energy on projects within Treasure Island.
Yes. Well, I would like to introduce Jeff Baker, the government liaison for Duke Energy. He's going to be introducing his team and be going over the grid improvement, the infrastructure improvement that Duke Energy is doing in this area that will be coming through Treasure Island. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and staff. Thank you so much for your opportunity to be here tonight to share some news on some major projects that we have going on in the city. Despite our goal of having very robust communications, just before the holidays, you know, in Commissioner Wetzel's area, there were some questions that basically is facilitating the reason that we're here tonight, to make sure that all of you have the information that you need, so that, you know, should you have questions from residents, you'll know exactly what's going on. So that's what we're going to, we're going to go through a quick presentation, and you can actually go ahead and go to slide three if you'd like to. We really have three different major projects that are occurring right now. The first project that is listed up there is the Gulf Boulevard undergrounding. Now that is the project that is where we are undergrounding the lines along Gulf Boulevard at the request of the city, where the funding is, you know, coming from both the city and the county. So that is a project that, you know, was city-initiated, and it's still, you know, underway, and you know, we're working through that project. But the two that I want to bring to your attention is what we call the storm protection, and then our major projects. In the 2019 legislative session, there was a bill that was passed that required utilities to strengthen their, what we call storm hardening, to make it, to make the grid more resilient should there be storms. Let's face it, we all know that we live in a very vulnerable area, and so it's one of those things where the legislature finally put in place a funding mechanism that allowed the utilities to do this work. Of course, it was passed in 2019, and so we had, you know, 2020 to plan for that, and then we started implementing this plan in 2021. And what we did was we took a look at the reliability, and we started, you know, by specific project, doing this work. And one of the cities that was, you know, first on the list was Treasure Island, and that was some of the work that started. But then, you know, as we got into this, we realized that there had to be a better way than just jumping from here to there to all over our system. So what we decided to do going forward, and starting with January 2022, we're going to be implementing this program by substation. So we will come in and we will do all the major projects associated with that substation at one point in time. So we'll come into an area, do the work, and then we shouldn't have to come back into that area for, you know, several years to do any kind of major work. So I think from a reliability and a resiliency standpoint, it's going to be a great thing for Treasure Island, but it will, you know, for several months going forward, you know, we will be doing some significant work in the area. And what you're going to see tonight is the plans for that, and for Commissioner Toth and Commissioner Toth, you will notice that most of the work is in Districts 3 and 4. Do not worry, our engineering team is working on the substation that services most of your area, so the entire city will, you know, have this work done over the next, probably year to 18 months.
I'm District 3, by the way.
Oh, I'm, no, 3 and, there's some, 3 and 4 is where the work's happening.
Work is being done there.
Okay.
It's pointing that they're not having any work, or their, theirs isn't covered in this one.
We're on a different, I guess 1 and 2 is a different grid, correct?
Yeah, it could, it served from a different substation.
Yeah, number could figure that one out.
This map shows, you know, a lot of the work that is, that's going on, and I'm going to ask Libby Hockford from our team, she's going to kind of talk through things. The one of the things that you'll see is the light pink line is the work that's right there on Sunset, that's, work is happening now. The green coming up with Gulf Boulevard is the Gulf Boulevard duplication project, and then all the other work is tied into the substation work that's happening out of our Pasadena sub, which is the one that we're working on right now.
We can go to the next slide, please. So as Jeff just mentioned, in 2022, we're going to continue making grid improvements, and we are doing this by grouping together all grid improvement work and focusing on the substation. We're going to look at the substation and slowly make our way out, making improvements on the feeder lines. So the substation that does serve your residents is known as the Pasadena Substation. It serves roughly 17,900 customers, and we will be strengthening nine feeders that come out of this substation. We'll be equipping more than 18-mile lines of self-healing technology, we'll be upgrading nearly 200 transformers and 100 fuses. We'll also be replacing 2,000 feet of underground cable and upgrading 100 poles, and then we will lastly be replacing almost five miles of overhead electrical lines to underground. If we flip to the next slide, this is an overview footprint of the areas that will be affected by these nine feeders. So I don't know if you can really see from where you're sitting, but the four areas will be St. Petersburg, Treasure Island, St. Pete Beach in South Pasadena. All four areas will be affected by these nine feeders. But specifically, if we go to the next slide, there are three feeders that Treasure Island will be impacted by. Our first feeder is referred to as X211, and on this feeder, if you can see, there's a long blue line. That whole blue line is one feeder line. And in this feeder, some of the work that we will be completing are transformer replacements, fuse replacements, and there will be, in the yellow area, if you can see, that is where we will be converting neighborhoods from overhead to underground electric. On the next slide, that is our second feeder that we will be completing upgrades on. That long red line is one feeder, and on this feeder, you will see a few fuse replacements taking place. Not too much work, but there is a little bit. And then the last feeder, I know a lot of this, well, this is feeder X217, and I know a lot of this work that is taking place is mainly in St. Petersburg, but a little bit of it does run into the Treasure Island area, so I just wanted to make sure that you do have it on your radar and you are aware of it. For our next slide, we're going to talk about what to expect. Unfortunately, it is construction, it can be messy at times, and I know a lot of the streets are narrow, but we're going to do our best to keep it clean and get in and get out as quickly as possible. But I do want to make sure that your residents are aware of what they can expect in your neighborhood. A few of these things are, the white, we call them our bucket trucks. Above that picture is our overhead transformer. On the right side, the green box is an underground transformer. And the last machine, we call it our directional boring machine, that is what we use to underground residents. By no means we don't want to come into your neighborhoods and tear up people's yards and leave it messy, so instead of trenching, we do use directional boring, which that's the machine. It can directionally shoot lines underground without affecting your yards and tearing up your vegetation. Our next slide, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our customer communication process. We do have four phases of this process. The first one is our welcome phase. If your residents are fed from one of these nine feeders, they would have received a welcome postcard from me. I did leave a few with Amy, in case you guys would like to see what your residents did receive. But it is a green postcard that talks about that Duke Energy is going to be in the neighborhood from 2022. It's going to talk about what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're going to do it. And it also includes a QR code for your residents, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Our second phase is specifics. Some of your customers will only be affected by overhead work, and some of them will only be affected by underground work. Once we get closer to these construction dates, they will receive another postcard letting them know that we're kind of starting to ramp things up, and you'll be seeing us out there soon. Also, underground will be receiving the same things, they will also receive a brochure that walks them through step by step the whole process. Our third phase is inform and support. This phase, so on the postcards that were sent out, there is a QR code that your residents were able to use their cell phones and kind of use the camera to look up the QR code, which then directs them to a Duke Energy webpage. And on this webpage, it does talk about the Pasadena work that's coming for 2022. It walks them through what to expect, it shares them my information, they can call, they can text, they can email me, and it also shows them videos of the work that's being done, in case they would like to see what to expect and things like that, there will be videos on there for them. The last phase is our survey phase. Once all construction is complete, I'll be reaching out to your residents again, just kind of touch base with them, hear about their experience, if it's good, if it's bad, what I can do to make it better, and most importantly, I want to make sure that all of our restoration needs are met. I take pride in making sure that everyone's yard looks exactly how it was when I first showed up. And then our last slide here, I know it's a lot of work that's coming your way. Your residents do have someone to turn to, whether it be for the SPP hardening, they can reach out to Ginger Broslett, unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight. But then if your other residents are being affected by the Pasadena substation work, they can reach out to me, they can call, they can text, they can email us, we can schedule appointments to meet face-to-face or via Skype, if they are more comfortable doing that. If they cannot find one of our phone numbers, they're more than welcome to just call the Duke Energy Call Center, and our representatives have been trained to direct them to one of us to help get the issue resolved.
You can move to the next slide. Thanks. Do we have any questions that we can?
Yeah, that was a super fast presentation. I'm not sure if Gina speaks a little slower than you, but wow, that was super fast. So yeah, I have a few questions, just because you went through it really fast. Can you go back to, let's go to just kind of the areas that our residents are going to be affected with? So I don't, my pages aren't numbered in your booklet, so I'm not sure what to call your page numbering, because there's no numbering.
Sure.
So let's just look at Treasure Island, because that's really where we're going to be getting the calls and the questions from. I can count the page numbers. Does anybody have page numbering?
I think it's seven. It shows the map.
Okay. So as this rolls out, it's this page.
Yep.
As this rolls out, so, and maybe I missed it, because it was going so fast, are these going to be done in like a timeline phase, and is that already determined and on our website, so people can kind of be aware of when the timeline's going to happen in their neighborhoods?
Yeah, of course, we do have a schedule for these projects, and when they're going to start and end, and I will be making updates to the webpage for your residents to turn to. We also send out those postcards before it starts. I'll send out phone calls and text messages and automated emails to make sure that everyone's in a loop that they'll know before it starts.
Okay, so right now, where is it starting, according to this page?
I would not expect any work to start in this area until closer to maybe March.
March this year, and where would it start on this map, March this year?
We're starting at the substation, and then we slowly make our way out.
So can you show me on the map where that is?
If you look at the, 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 where it's.
Yeah, and but when you say out, out which direction?
Well, I mean, it, the feeder only comes out and goes, you know, west, so it'll start and will move west down into these areas.
And it'll be on our website exactly what the timeline is, so people know when to expect. expect it?
Yes, approximately the dates. I won't, I can't have anything specific out there right now.
But we don't have that out there right now for our residents, that's coming?
Well, it's actually gonna be on their, their website. So, they're gonna be sending out these informational cards that have the QR code that goes to the project website of Duke Energy.
But we won't have it on our city website for our residents?
Um, probably not. I mean, that's what this is for, to kinda get the word out. I mean, certainly, as we get major updates, we can continue to talk about it, but...
Okay. And then they direct questions to you on your, then we won't have a, a questions page on our website, they'll have to go straight to there?
Yep, that's correct.
Could we put a link on our website directing our residents if they have questions?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. If they have questions, we can put the contact information.
Okay. 'Cause I don't think people watching tonight kinda got that all in that quick little snippet, so I wanna make sure people are clear where to go for more information.
To, to be clear on that, for the project that's happening on Sunset Beach right now, Ginger is the contact for what's happening right now, right?
Yes.
I think we got that. And, and with that, I do want to thank you all for coming. I know I've been peppering Amy with questions, and you guys have been responsive, and I've put you, well, not, not you, Libby, but Amy, or Ginger directly in contact, and have been handing out some of that information. So, and I do appreciate you guys, you know, recognizing that the one postcard was sent, and then the project kind of got delayed, because, and down there, we are so, so tight, and it, you know, changes traffic flow and things like that. So, so I do appreciate that, and we've, for the residents in, in our area, and I, I believe it's all areas, but we're pretty heavy right now, that if there's follow-up questions to this, I wanna let them know that Duke has offered to come to a meeting specific for the residents in the neighborhood, and if, and I wanted to see before committing anyone to that, to see how this went tonight, and if there's a lot of follow-up questions, or if they would just prefer, 'cause some are very specific to their yard, and some can just be, hey, come out and look at this damage, so, and, and I do know that, that there are residents that are, are in contact with you. So, I do appreciate that. Just one thing, if you could talk, because there does seem to be a little bit of confusion with that our area on Sunset is not going to be undergrounded, is my understanding, but then also, if you could just explain the double poles, that my, my understanding is that the old poles will come out once everything's transferred over, but we may see double poles for a while? Is that...
Yeah, we refer to that as joint use, and because all the utilities use the same poles. In many cases, you know, Duke Energy is the owner, but in some cases, it could be, whatever Verizon is now, Frontier. And so, what happens is when we move a pole, when we set a new pole, you know, the joint user, we notify the joint user, but now they have an extended period for them to come and, and move their equipment. We obviously don't move their equipment, nor do they move ours. So, but as soon as those joint users are off the pole, then we will come out and remove that pole.
Okay. And, thank you. And then one other thing is the size of the poles. Now, there's been some concern over that, but if you could just explain why the, these poles are so much larger, and...
Actually, two of my, two other colleagues that are in our engineering team are here, Ron Kennedy and Anna Maria Mendoza. Ron, do you wanna address the pole size issue?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, you'll notice, obviously, the poles are larger, and that's because it needs to meet a new National Electrical Safety Code standard, which basically calls for larger poles, set deeper, so they're more stout, more sturdy. Sometimes we, where we used to use two, there might be a third pole in there. So, that's the purpose for that.
So, those are to comply with national standards, and, and the city does not necessarily have any say in, in that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then while here up there talking about the poles, maybe, there, there was one concern, and this may seem like a novelty issue now, but it is an important thing, was the, that I had a lot of issues with the Christmas lights, but, and I think that Amy said that's being, going to be addressed going forward in a, in a different manner, since we're on the topic of that. If you could just address that with the electric outlets on the lights. So...
Okay, so, I'm not aware of the change that has been made, but I know that we have individuals that will work exclusively with you on that.
So, for the Gulf Boulevard undergrounding, the replacement poles that go with the undergrounding, have the electrical component added for the holiday lights on those poles, 'cause that's where we were getting a lot of, the poles weren't lit up, or the decorations weren't lit up on the southern part of our, our city. So, we're handling that through our contract for the undergrounding in Gulf Boulevard.
Okay.
And I knew that wasn't necessarily, I just, while we're on the topic of replacing poles, for those who are listening, wanted just to address that issue, so. Okay, I think that's all that I have. And I, and I do thank you for providing that, the contact information, because it is nice to be able to point a resident when they have damage in their yard, directly to somebody who can be responsive.
Any other questions?
Yeah, actually, I do, I have a couple of questions. For districts one and two, that power grid comes, do you, where does that come from, that feed?
Is the other sub, right?
Okay, so then they'll eventually be on the replacement plan process?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, to piggyback on the undergrounding part, did, was there any approach on looking at the Causeway and undergrounding any of those wires that come out along the feed from Pasadena? 'Cause since we have the Causeway tore up, it would seem like it'd be a nice time to look at undergrounding those, too.
I had a similar question that you can probably answer along with that, was, my question was gonna be the undergrounding in Paradise Island in the neighborhood. That's one of the biggest requests that we get from, or that I've received from a lot of residents, like, when are you gonna underground the utilities on my street? When are you gonna do it? And so, I'm very excited that that's happening. I was just curious how that, what the decision process was, or engineering behind picking that particular section and not other parts of the city. So, along with Commissioner Toss's question about...
Yeah, it's all reliability data-driven. It's one of those things where, obviously, in that particular area, you know, they, they are less reliable than other parts of this area, so that is why they are being underground. But, not to be the downer here, but when we talk about undergrounding, this is not aesthetics undergrounding. So, poles will likely remain, because the other providers have no obligation to go underground, so it's one of those things where it will certainly increase the reliability of the electrical service for those residents, but oftentimes, when people hear undergrounding, they're thinking aesthetics more than reliability, and this is a reliability-driven project only.
Actually, I was looking at it from a reliability standpoint, because that is, if you look at the Causeway, it's the biggest feed that comes out to the island. So, that's why I was asking if there was any consideration to replacing the overheads with underground, since we are doing the big road project, and it would seem conducive to do them together.
Well, as far, again, so this was all based on reliability data that we have, so at that point, it did, it did not qualify. But it's one of those things, and that's something we can have a side conversation with the city. Now, obviously, if we underground it at the request of someone, then obviously, there would be, have to be, you know, responsible party, you know, for the billing, the additional billing for that. But, we could certainly, 'cause obviously, we're gonna be doing some of the work in that area, so we can certainly, I can, I'll have a follow-up with Amy, and we can talk about the possibility of doing something like that.
Thank you.
Do we know for certain that it's not already undergrounded on the Causeway?
I don't think it is.
No, there's lines all over. I went out and looked.
Well, yeah, but like, he's saying, there could be, just because there's lines doesn't mean that the power isn't underground. That could just be other utilities. But I don't know, I haven't paid attention to it.
I'm not sure, but we can find out. We do have a follow-up meeting scheduled.
Okay. Any other question?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you very much. This is, I, we had a lot of issues with Frontier and just the communication piece there, so I just wanna thank you guys for coming out and being so proactive with this. It seems like you have a really great system put together for how to inform the residents. So, just wanted to say thank you for that, and thank you for being here and going through all that information.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Item number two has been tabled. So, item number three is ordinance number 2022 dash zero two, first reading, amending the fiscal year 2022 citywide fee schedule.
Ordinance 2022 dash O two, and ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending the citywide fee schedule and adopting Appendix A as the City of Treasure Island's fee schedule, superseding ordinance or parts thereof in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for...
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This item seeks approval to make some minor adjustments to the citywide fee schedule. As you may remember, we may, did make some significant changes in this adopted budget, with a lot of different departments making some adjustments and modifications. And as we've learned in the first couple of months, we've got some other little things that we need to pay attention to and fix, just a little bit of errors now that we've got them up and running that we've, we've noticed. We think it's in the best interest to, to make these modifications. There's only two departments that are making changes, Public Work, Parks and Rec, and Community Development, and I will bring them up here to kinda go over some of the specifics of the changes that they're recommending. But I did, just wanna kinda go over the overview, that this is the first reading, so in two weeks, February first will be the second reading with a, an advert, an ad in the Times in between there, to meet all of our ordinance requirements. So, with that, I will invite up, I think, Catherine Youngkind to speak about the CDD changes, and then Kathy will come up, Kathy Hayduk will come up and speak to some of the Parks and Rec changes.
Hi, good evening. As you've seen in your packet, we had several adjustments. The first is an adjustment to large project construction fees. We found that our fees were not consistent with a lot of the neighboring municipalities, that they were very, very high for very large projects. So, we suggest reducing that from ten dollars per thousand to seven dollars per thousand to bring it more in line. The second change is to charge a fee for building review when we review plans multiple times. We had already implemented that for zoning and other departments earlier in the year, but at the time, we had not changed the building fees. The third change is the plan review fees for zoning, floodplain, and other than building. And we inadvertently said half of half for those fees. The intent was just to be a half, so that's actually a, like a scribbler's error, a change that had accidentally halved our fees, so we corrected that. The fourth proposed change is just to clarify that refunds are a standalone item and not part of review fees. The fifth change is the permit fees for things other than building, and we wanted to clarify that and add a structural engineering fee, because those are projects that we have to send out for review and pay for hourly. And the last change is to the Planning and Zoning Board, local planning agency section, that adds the same civil engineering and surveying review fees that we are paying but not getting reimbursed for. So, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Alright, Kathy?
Good evening. Under the city staff review, we have an application that pretty much consists of weddings and memorials. We have changed the wording of those applications to hopefully gather and capture a lot of events that include more than the beach weddings and memorials, such as we've had requests for catered meals, or church services, or similar gatherings. So, this change will allow the city manager or her designee to determine whether or not the request can be done through a simple application, or if commission approval is required. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Alright.
I, I, what, what section is, is that in the fee schedule? Does any...
It's on page nineteen.
Page twenty-two?
Nineteen.
Thank you. I see it.
Alright, without any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
No, no, I just was looking for it to read it again. I'm good.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2022 dash zero two, amending the citywide fee schedule, and schedule it for the final hearing on February first, 2022, with a required advertisement on January twenty-sixth, 2022.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Seems pretty straightforward. Any public comment? Alright, roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, item four is approve request to amend the non-exclusive license agreement between the City of Treasure Island and the Madera Beach Youth Baseball and Softball League.
Just an update, at the January fourth commission meeting, the commission had a few questions for the league, and it pertained to banners on the fence during non-peak or play season, as well as use of concession stand or baseball field for community events, as well as whether or not a hundred percent of the profits from the league go back into the league. I spoke with Darren McClellan of the league, and, one, he is aware that the banners need to come down during non-play time or non-season. Number two, as long as I give him the dates as soon as possible, so they can schedule around it for the community events, he is definitely okay with that. He has been notified of the yard sale, as well as the community picnic that the island could pretty wanna hold. And then, per the profits, they are not-for-profit. A hundred percent of the profits from all their registration fees, or sponsorships, or concession stand does go back into the league, and he will provide the city with a financial report each year. So, where those were the three requests that the commission had that I have discussed, and it has been captured in the non-exclusive license agreement.
Wonderful. Any questions for Kathy?
No.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to enter into the First Amendment and Non-Exclusive License Agreement between the City of Treasure Island and the Madera Beach Youth Baseball and Softball League, to waive the maintenance and participation fees for the period of up to two years, and to allow the league priority scheduling for the use of the Bill Lyons Field for a five-year period, in consideration for the payment of eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars towards the renovation cost for the ball field, as submitted by the Athletic Services.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, any public comment? Alright, very none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Taugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Thank you. Item number five is reconsider 2022 commission meeting schedule?
There's one change that's being proposed. The budget hearings are being proposed to be set in this schedule. The other iteration had them to be announced, because the city can't have their budget hearings on the same night as the county commission...
on the same night as the county commission or the school board. And so they were, those schedules were announced, so we were able to set our budget dates. So the two days are September 6th, the first budget hearing, and September 19th, which is the second budget hearing. And I believe the 19th is on a...
Is a Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, really the only change is moving our September 20th meeting to the 19th.
Mm-hmm, that's correct. It's one meeting.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Alright. Any other questions for Amy? I'll entertain a motion then.
Sure, I move to approve the proposed 2022 commission meeting schedule.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Kind of nice that we locked it in this time.
Yeah. Alright, any public comment? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Taugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Alright. Item number six is approve city manager purchase authority of $35,891.64 to Sloppy Joe's Restaurant for Bar Management and Operations for the 2021 Sanding Ovations Event.
Good evening. In 2014, beer trucks were no longer permitted on the beach due to a lawsuit that the city was having regarding traffic on the beach. The Department of Environmental Protection, as well as the Division of State Lands, had not permitted the use of the beer trucks, which had been something that we had used in previous years for sanding ovations. Obviously, creating a logistical nightmare for us during sanding ovations. We worked and partnered with the Bill Maher and Sloppy Joes to build, in 2014 was a trial bar on the beach to sell alcohol for the sanding ovations event. 2015, the state and Division of State Lands allowed us to have a beer truck on the beach. However, it could not stay overnight. That again created some, what of a difficult situation for us as the beer distributor would had to come out every night and remove the beer truck and then bring it back. So we again did another bar with Sloppy Joes. Well, it became very popular. Today, we have two bars. Sloppy Joes manages the complete operation ordering of the bars. Staff works a week before to build the bars, a few days after to break down the bars. Managers, bar backs, we hire the bartenders, work the bars during sanding ovations. It, this year attributed to at least a third of our revenue. We had a very good year, the best one on, on books so far. And so Sloppy Joes is reimbursed for any expenses that they have, as well as they have always been approved to have a percentage of the revenues from those to offset the cost of all their staff and time and the managers that are out there. So city staff is requesting a city manager authority to authorize the expenditure of $35,891.64 to Sloppy Joes for the management and operations of the bars for the 2021 Sanding Ovations Event and purchase authority greater than $25,000 requires city commission. If you have other questions to Roger Jones, who's the food and beverage manager for Sloppy Joes, is here. And he can provide a lot more insight of the amount of time and work it takes for Sloppy Joes and their staff to do this, which is a great partnership for the city. It's become so very popular. They even help us, they sit on the committee, they help us with sponsorships. So it is a very good partnership. I don't know if you want to just say anything to know? He's good.
Okay. Alright, any questions?
No, they did a great job. They did a great job.
Absolutely.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, sorry, let me get to the page really quick, I was reading on it. I move to approve the city manager's purchase authority of $35,891.64 to Sloppy Joes for the management and operations of the bar for the 2021 Sanding Ovations Event.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Thank you for being here and being willing to answer questions.
Thank you.
Alright, any public comment? Alright, roll call please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Taugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Alright, thank you. Next is item seven, approve the replacement of public safety vehicles for police and fire EMS.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. This purchasing item before you seeks authorization to purchase two public safety vehicles that were identified in the FY '22 budget as needing replaced this year. Both will be purchased from Duval Ford out of Jacksonville area off the Florida Sheriff's Association contract. The purchase will include a replacement for the police interceptor and the fire EMS reserve rescue unit, both of which are at their functional end of life. The police department vehicle has the equivalent of 162,000 miles. That's a calculation of actual road miles plus factor that converts the hours to miles. And the reserve rescue for the fire department is almost 20 years old itself. The combined price for these two vehicles is about $71,000 with the balance of the available budget to be used for upfitting costs. We think those costs are going to be right at or a little over budget, but the, both the departments have said that any sort of overage, they believe they can absorb in their operating budget. With that, I will, I will say that I've got members of the police department here to answer any questions about the interceptor. And I thought Trip was going to be here, but he's not. But I'm, could be, could answer any questions that he might have about the reserve rescue if you guys have any questions about the vehicles themselves.
Any questions? What exactly is the reserve rescue?
If you ever see it, it's the F-250 that's almost always parked outside. It's the, it's the backup unit. If the actual ambulance reserve unit is out of service, it is the backup reserve that can be called out to make the medical calls and a four-wheel drive, all that sort of stuff. It's just a, an extra vehicle that can be used. It's easier to turn out a reserve or a rescue unit than it is to roll out one of the engines. So any sort of backup that we have along those lines is always, is always appreciated with our fire response rates.
And that one is 19 years old?
And it can go on the beach as well because it's a four-by-four.
Okay. Is that what it's used for mostly, going out on the beach?
Yes, and when the ambulance is in service. And I believe Trip is online, but...
They also use it frequently for materials runs. If they ever need to go pick up stuff from Largo, like the county health, any stuff like that, that it's just a whole lot easier to use that than, you know, borrowing another one of the fleet vehicles or taking one of the larger vehicles.
Right, okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion then.
Sure. I move to approve the city manager purchase authority up to $71,000 for the replacement of two city public safety vehicles from Duval Ford sourced from the Florida Sheriff's Association contract.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, any public comment? Alrighty, roll call please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Taugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight is approve city manager purchase authority in the total amount of $109,120 for fiscal year 2022 to Xylem Water Solutions USA for spare pumps for master pump station and pump station number four.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This item is so that we can have some spare parts on, on, onboard. What we found out a few, probably 18 months ago, was one of our pumps in the master pump station had, had needed some repair work. And it took about four months to get repaired. So at that point, we decided that since those pumps that are in there are about 10 years old, that maybe a spare one would be prudent to have. So that in case we do have to get one out for a long-term maintenance, we would have one that we could put in there. The same thing with pump station number four. It's the only two pump stations that we have that have three pumps. The, the reason why they have three pumps is because of the amount of volume that goes through it. So the smaller pumps, stations only have two. Those we can get, we have spares, they're very low-cost items. These two are very high-cost items. One is, what, 30, 39,000? And then the other one is 65 or 8, 69,000? And then the other one is 39-something. So this is the, this is to request that we can get those purchased this year. And we had $120,000 funded in this year's approved budget in the wastewater fund.
Any questions for Mike?
No.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the city manager's purchase authority of $109,120 for the spare pump purchase of Xylem Water Solutions USA, Inc.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Alright, any public comment? Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Taugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Alright, item number nine is authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order with Enviro Waste Services Group for additional funds for Isle of Palms Gravity Sewer Main to perform grout on leaking laterals, furnish and install eight-inch diameter cure-in-place pipeliner for an additional amount of $158,995.30.
Back in November, I came to the commission to request authorization to, for a purchase authority of $150,000 to Enviro Waste Services. They'd perform our sewer main cleaning video and lining. With that $150,000, I put them to work in the Isle of Capri off of 112th Avenue in that first area. The reason why is because that area was exhibiting some area, some signs that we were having some leaky laterals and leak, leak in some of the segments. So for about $35,000, they went out there and they videoed and, and inspected the lines. They did not do the laterals, but they did all the lines and how the laterals come into the main line. They found 250, over $255,000 worth of work that needed to be done in that one area. That is the reason for us to come back for the additional $158,995.30. And what that does is it gives us a little bit of, it gives us a little bit more than what we need, but that allows us about 10% contingencies so that I don't have to come back here for, you know, $2,000 or $3,000 in addition.
And Mike, you found that work in Isle of Palms, correct, not Isle of Capri?
I am sorry, it is Isle of Palms.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
It is the Isle of Palms, yes. It is not in Capri, it's the Isle of Palms.
In Capri.
It's okay.
Any question?
Is that the main road that comes out, that goes out to?
It's all the main, all the fingers go from there.
Right.
It's just that one first area when you get off, when you first get off 112th Avenue after, after the Waffle House. Once you get over in there, you can, we had a break there from Frontier. So it was a good time for us to, to put our eyes on all that area. So that's what, that's what the $35,000 was for. And then we need to fix those areas. Now what this will do is just do the pipe that cured in place and do some grouting. There's going to be two more areas that we'll have to dig up, but that is under a, a purchase authority that you've already given us. So I don't even have a cost for that yet. I'm waiting for my contractor to get back with me on those two areas. But that will also, that will be a dig, dig up and replace. We can't get in there from, through non-trenchless.
Any other questions? Alright, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order with Enviro Waste Solutions Group, Inc. for additional funds for Isle of Palms Gravity Sewer Main to perform grout and leaking laterals, furnish and install eight-inch diameter cure-in-place piping liner for an additional amount of $158,995.30.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
We need it.
Alright, any public comment? Roll call please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Taugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Thank you. Item number 10 has been tabled. Item 11 is approve city manager purchase authority of $45,000 to Universal Environmental Solutions LLC for master pump station cleaning.
Alright, last one for the evening. Normally, we don't come up here and get permission from you because it's usually under $10,000. And lately, it's been under $25,000. Over the last couple of years, we've had a tremendous amount of work being performed on Gulf Boulevard. Because of that work and collapses and the other ti, and the digging up of the collapsed lines, it introduced a lot of sand and grit shell into our master pump station. In addition to that, as solids enter into a wastewater treatment plant, they start to combine together, all the fibers. And what that is called is a rag. Those rags will float on the top of the surface of the master pump station or a pump station until they get waterlogged, and then they sink to the bottom. When they sink to the bottom is the worst place for them to be because they will enter into our pumps. If they enter into our pumps, they clog them up. What has happened in the master pump station, because we had all that silt, concrete, crushed concrete, sand, limestone, the rags have become hard as a rock. They are very hard and they don't break up. This time that they went into it, we shut the master pump station down for two days so that we could get in there and remove all that. That cost more than $25,000. We've already spent 22. So before I get them back there to do another round inside the pump station, I needed this additional funds and authority from you all. It's extremely important that we get this thing cleaned out to protect our pumps and so that during emergencies, we don't have to worry about those pumps getting ragged up.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the city manager purchase authority of $45,000 to Universal Environmental Solutions LLC for master pump station cleaning.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, any public comment? Alright, roll call please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Taugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, item number 12 has been tabled. And that brings us to the end of our regular commission meeting. I do have a request that we take a five-minute break before reconvening for our workshop. So it is currently 7:10, we'll reconvene at 7:15. Alright, we will go ahead and reconvene our commission workshop. All right, we will go ahead and reconvene our commission workshop for this evening. And to start off with, we have city manager and city attorney reports.
I have no report at this time.
I just have three things. I also wanted to thank all of our volunteers who came out to beautify TI, January eighth, and that's our second time, I think it's growing a little bit, so hopefully that continues to grow. I also wanted to acknowledge that the state legislative session has begun. Our two legislative requests have been filed, so the master pump station project as well as additional funding for relining of our sewer pipes. So those are two separate bills that have been filed as a legislative request. And then last, we will have the Buck Street tree, street team tomorrow at noon in Treasure Island for some rallying and pep rallying. They will be in the community center park along one oh six Avenue, so we encourage everyone to drive on down one oh six Avenue, share in the rally, you'll be getting flags and cheer on the Bucks. So it'll be noon tomorrow, I'm sorry, noon on Thursday, January twentieth.
On Thursday?
Thursday.
That's not tomorrow.
What was that?
Tomorrow's Wednesday.
Am I mixed up today's Tuesday, right? So it's Thursday, January twentieth at noon.
Okay. And that's gonna be on Central Avenue, is it?
On one oh six.
One oh six.
So kinda coming down where we have the community center park.
Okay.
If you're going west, they'll be on your left-hand side or going east, they'll be along the park and doing a little bit of interaction from the car. If you'd like to park in the, park in the community park itself, you can get some pictures. If you get out of your car, they'll be more than happy to take some pictures with the the street team. And that's all.
So Thursday at noon.
Thursday at noon, January twentieth.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Then we will go ahead and move right into our discussion. So the only item on our agenda this evening is creation of a homeless intervention foundation and homeless update. And we have, who's reporting on this?
Chief Bars is on the line and he's going to be our first speaker on this item to go over the proposal to create a homeless foundation.
Oh, it says he's talking.
He's muted, I think.
Hang on one second.
Well, I think, Chief, if you, if you'd like, Chief Barkley and I can tag-team this. You wanna try one more time to see if you can, if we can hear you?
I hear you fine, Chief Bars.
Oh, there, I can hear Stacy. Chief Bars, can you try again?
Are you able to hear me now?
There we go.
Oh, great, okay, perfect, I was just leaving a message in the chat. Everyone can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. Mayor Commissioners, thank you and I apologize for that technical difficulty, not sure what happened there. Wanted to lead off tonight and talk a little bit about the homelessness in Treasure Island. As the mayor and commissioners are aware and most of staff knows, your fire and police departments have been addressing this issue for about three years now actively. And what we found is that we have about ten to twelve regular homeless folks that rotate through, we get to know most of them and their issues and while they're, they're not as numerous as other communities have, we understand that they are very visible. They do like to sit out on Gulf Boulevard and be seen and we know that that's not always ideal. Some of the things that we've tried to do, we, we realized right away that we could not arrest or transport to the hospital and, and work ourselves through this issue. What that does is, is basically removes one person for a couple of days and, and it's just around robin intervention, maybe even a couple of hours in some cases. The recidivism rate that Chief Barkley will speak to, I'm sure, is a hundred percent. We take them to the hospital when they overindulge in drugs or alcohol and they're usually back on the streets same day or the next day. So that's not how we solve this issue. What we started doing was looking at the root causes, which are mental health issues and substance abuse in almost every case that we've come across. So we partnered with the county and, and other not-for-profits and some profit agencies and we were able to have about a dozen success stories where we've gotten people off the streets, we've helped them find services that address their issues and we don't see those folks anymore. Unfortunately, their, their slots seem to backfill and we still have ten to twelve homeless folks living on our streets without addresses. So as, as a, a tool that we developed, Officer Chapooty and Sawyer Keller, one of our firefighters, put together the LIFT program. That's the Life Intervention Focus Team where we make specific efforts at encountering these folks and trying to get them into so, social services programs that can get them off the streets into temporary housing, the wraparound services they need for their alcohol or drug addiction, mental health treatment, twelve-step programs, all that stuff that will actually solve this issue for us. So one, one of the things we're proposing tonight is just a natural extension of that. Since your police and fire departments just aren't equipped and it's, it's not in our, our, our purpose to address these issues, one of the things we felt would be if we could form a foundation that would secure these social services for the homeless at no or limited cost to the city. That's like the natural progression of that LIFT program that the officers started. One of the ways this would be done would be through fundraising. We would create a actual not-for-profit state corporation with Chief Barkley, myself and one of the citizen donors, initial donors to this program as the board and eventually apply, apply for 501(c)(3) status with the IRS. We're looking at, you know, maybe two to three weeks to get the foundation up with your approval and then another four to six weeks for 501(c)(3) status. At that point, we could accept donations. The first one, from a very generous citizen, Mr. Frank Velton, would be in the amount of ten thousand dollars and that would be seed money to get this foundation started. At that point, the relationship between the city and the foundation would change. Chief Barkley and I would step back. We would let the foundation appoint other members to govern it and we would take more of a advisory role as city staff and, and kinda help the, the foundation meet some of the needs of these folks and the needs of the city as well. With that, I'll open it up to questions, which I'm sure are probably gonna be numerous at this point.
Any questions first or should we let the police chiefs?
It doesn't matter. I didn't know if there would maybe be some specific questions for Chief Bars because we're kinda going in a slightly different direction at the, after.
Okay. Any question for fire chief?
I don't have a question necessarily in it, but I, I think that it is, you know, the, the proactive approach and, and realizing that we can't arrest our way out of it is a definite area that I hope, hopefully that this program will help to educate the community that it's not just in, you know, easy solution, that you can't just put up barriers to places, you can't just trespass people from everywhere because, you know, it's, as, as the chief said, the numbers are the, pretty much the same, it's just there's a higher visibility rate because of some issues. And I just upfront want to really reach out to Mr. Velton and thank him for both being here and helping to provide the seed money for this and build upon it. I know that he has been very invested in this from, you know, when this issue really started coming up about a year or so ago, year and a half ago, when, you know, the issue became more aggressive and so just from the outset and, and the, you know, it's just, it's such a tough issue, so appreciate everybody looking into this and, and, you know, it's, it does seem like the numbers are greater, but, you know, it's just a, it's really not that many, it's just the visibility, I think so.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Wetzel's comments, thanking our city staff and our, and Chief Bars and Chief Barkley for being proactive and, and Mr. Velton because on a national average, we know it's growing and it hasn't grown here, but it will grow because that's just how statistics work nationally and then they filter down to our smaller cities. So by being proactive and by getting in front of it, we can definitely try to reduce and increase in our population. And also the fact that we're collaborating, police, fire, citizens and the city, while this is becoming a national problem, I mean, we couldn't be in a better position to try things, they, they're not gonna all work, this is a moving target. If we, if there was a silver bullet solution, somebody in San Francisco would have figured it out because they have huge problems. I'm a Californian for seventeen years and we haven't figured it out there because it's a big issue. But the fact that we're even trying things and being progressive about it, I think is an amazing approach because in that, we will continue to work towards a solution and if we try several things that don't work, we're one step closer to something that does work. And then while we're creating more of a momentum by having involvement from Mr. Velton and citizens and, and creating this foundation, it also creates more interest in our community and the more interested our community is in solving the problem and more hands-on they are, the closer we're gonna get to getting our hands around it before it gets worse. So again, just mimicking what Commissioner Wetzel said, we are, I'm so proud of our city, our, our chiefs and our citizens for getting out in front of it now and, and doing something about it instead of just noticing it's a problem, but saying, hey, we really gotta look at it, we gotta try different things. So I'm, I'm just so proud to be part of this dynamic group and again, anything that we can continue to do to support, I know our commission's passionate about this.
Chief, I got a question. What would these funds be used for?
Commissioner Doctor, well, it's, it could be a variety of things. It could be, the foundation could be purchasing contracts with service providers to provide wraparound mental health or substance abuse services, potentially temporary housing to get folks off the street and sobered up and, and, you know, in the right frame of mind to make a decision about their future. Really, really the sky's the limit, we'll have a varie, a huge variety of options for this foundation to choose from to do, but a very limited scope of, of what we want them to do, which is get these folks, you know, back into productive members of society and off our streets as a residence.
I just wanna echo the, all the sentiments so far. Thank you, Mr. Velton, for stepping up and offering to assist us get this off the ground. It's certainly one of the most frequently brought up issues to me through social media, through people on the street, emails constantly asking about it and I am, it's, it's difficult to explain that we are working very diligently on, on doing what we can from a staff perspective, the police, fire, the commission, we discuss it all the time. I think Amy and I probably discuss the topic every Monday when we meet without, without fail. So we are doing what we can and I think this is a wonderful next step and a next level of service that we can provide because that is how we're going to address the problem. It's a growing problem across the country, it's not unique to Treasure Island and it's not unique to Treasure Island within the Gulf beaches. I mean, every, everywhere up and down the beaches and St. Petersburg all have this issue and we're all trying to help the cause together. So I think this'll be a great, great way for us to, to do it right here in Treasure Island and help the individuals that are here get their lives back on track. So.
So we wanted to kind of also provide an update. It's been about seven months since maybe the last time we provided an update. So I, I also wanted to thank Mr. Frank Velton, thank you so much for your generosity and providing this initial funding for this foundation. And so with this whole item, we first wanted to get the commission consensus on for us to go ahead and create the foundation. Once it's created, the nuts and bolts will be coming back for an agreement, kind of defining the role between the foundation and the commission in that we will seek a motion for approval on. But if we can have the update by Chief Barkley and the police department, that would be kind of the second item of this. And then I have some approach that we wanna continue on through calendar year two thousand and twenty-two and that's how we'll finish out the item. The chief?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Thanks for having us back and yeah, it's been about six, seven months since we first came to you about the LIFT program and I promised you we'd give updates and let you know what's working, what doesn't. And, you know, when we started this, we weren't really sure which direction it was gonna go, but it has opened up a lot of doors and I'm gonna speak shortly, just a little bit here and then I'll have Darren Chapooty come up because he's our, the street outreach officer for the police department and have him give you some actual facts and figures and some of the things that have developed over time. But if I may just take a few minutes, we came up with a frequently asked questions thing that we're gonna put on the city website, on the police department webpage, every place where someone can see it, because I know everybody gets frustrated. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna quickly cover the top three questions or things we get in emails and I know that's been, I'm sure the commissioners hear a lot of the residents. And I'm gonna start off by saying this and I, I start off when I speak to community groups that we have a very small box that we can work in law enforcement-wise. And one of the things people always tell me is, and I would, I'm starting my thirtieth year in law enforcement, I will tell you, as much as the world has changed, so has laws and regulations on how to deal with certain things and homelessness is no exception of that. One of the things I hear people say a lot is, why are they allowed to hang out here? Why are they allowed to do this, that and the other thing? Why can't we just get them out of here? And the first thing I say is anybody who has dreams of a van pulling up and pushing them all inside the van and driving them to a shelter is, that's not gonna happen. We have several individuals in our group that choose to live that lifestyle. As long as they are not breaking the law and being homeless is not illegal, as you're all aware, as long as they're not breaking the law, they can be any place that any other person can be. Now, some people misunderstood, they say, oh, Treasure Island's too easy on them, they're doing this and that. We take people to jail every single day. We take people for Marchman acts every single day. When they can't take care of themselves, they're a danger for themselves or others, we have to take them in for treatment. Sometimes they get to the point they're so inebriated that they need to be transported by ambulance. That's when Chief Bars and the fire department and EMS system has to get involved. So that happens every day. If they commit misdemeanor crimes, we take them to jail. What happens is the recidivism rate is almost a hundred percent. Sometimes they'll go into jail on a misdemeanor, they're getting no bond and they're out within a couple of hours. So basically, when the officers finish typing the report, if they get a ride back to the city or jump on a bus, here they are. That's, that's the reality of what we're dealing with. So what we're trying to do is find long-term solutions. Long-term solutions, not short-term. Short-term is throwing somebody in the back of a police car and that's not gonna work. Another thing I said, which is kind of already addressed here, is people say, well, it's worse than it's ever been. There's more homeless people than ever. Chief, you don't know what you're talking about, you're new here. There's more homeless people than there have been on Treasure Island. Well, that's when I rely on my staff. My staff, you know, Darren's been here for more than twenty years, they say, no, that's not true. What has happened through giving trespass warnings, which is another idea that everybody has, is they're trespassed for committing crimes on certain areas of property that the only place they're allowed to be now is on the public right-of-way along Gulf Boulevard. For a lot of them, they haven't committed crimes. That's the, that's an unintended consequence of- That's the, that's an unintended consequence of the trespass warnings on private property, trespass warnings on city property. That's about the only place they're allowed to be now, is along Gulf Boulevard. So that's what happens there. And we don't have the ability to, unless they're in danger to themselves or walking in traffic or panhandling in the roadway, we don't have the ability to remove them from there. And another thing is, what is the city doing? As I said, we're trying to find long-term solutions to a very difficult problem. I've spoken to my peers, other police chiefs from around the state. The only thing we're missing right now in our street outreach program is a social worker riding with our officer to be able to provide instant services. And that's what we were running into before. When we first came to you with the LIFT program, Darren and Sawyer would spend pretty much their entire shift on the telephone. If they interacted with somebody early in the morning, spend all day on the phone trying to get them into a service provider all day long. Now, we need somebody who has better connections to that and social service workers who can literally pick up a phone and find a bed somewhere when somebody wants help. And that's the key word, when they want help. So what I'm going to do is have Officer Chapooty come up here right now and just tell you a little bit about what has developed over the last six or seven months, some of the groups he's spoken to, and some of the numbers from the, you know, talk a little bit about the TRACE program.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Hope everybody had a happy new year. So a little update, the LIFT initiative, I started keeping track at the beginning of January, January 2021. And since we started that initiative for the whole calendar year, we had 63 contacts. During this time, we built relationships with NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. I've spoken at family-to-family meetings with that organization. I was invited to be a guest speaker at the Bay Pines Veterans Hospital for a justice group involving patients that have traumatic pasts with law enforcement, negative traumatic pasts, to kind of bridge that relationship. I've also been a guest speaker at the Pinellas County Veterans Task Force, occurred last week. And the Treasure Island Police Department has become part of the Tampa Bay Human Trafficking Task Force for the area. Starting in May, we built a relationship with Directions for Living, and they provided us telehealth access to counselors with their TRACE program, which is a telehealth risk assessment for crisis evaluation. Now, out of those contacts, those 63 contacts we proactively made on the street, 25 of those contacts were using Directions for Living and getting them connected with that TRACE tablet to a counselor. From there, Directions for Living will follow up with them and provide the resources that they would need for their given situation. So that's a little update on our contacts. The bridging the resources is a complicated issue. I just started one today with a local organization in Largo. I heard their name from a group on the street, so I gave them a phone call. I said, hey, what can you guys help us provide with? So we're actively forging those relationships with those community resources to help expand our umbrella that we can provide for the citizens on the street. Not only is it for homelessness and people in need that are visible on Gulf Boulevard, the LIFT program, what I would imagine it to be was for everyone, life intervention focused. And a couple of resource, a couple of examples of that is a person called 211 a couple of weekends ago, and we weren't able to get them at that time the resource on TRACE because the hours of operation. We were able to de-escalate the situation, and the person was turned over to a family member. Now, the LIFT initiative part of this takes place a couple of days after when I came back to work. Followed up with this person, connected them with a counselor. One of our officers did, connected them with a counselor using that TRACE program. Also, another example for our citizens in the senior citizen realm, one of our residents on the Isle of Capri found someone wandering around the other day. And they brought this person to the Police Department, trying to get some help for this person that they found. Well, long story short, this person was memory impaired, and we were able to reunite them with their family. Everybody was safe and sound. Another part of this LIFT program, this LIFT initiative, is making contact with that family today, going by there and seeing if they need any resources. Since they are not from the area, they are visiting for a couple of months. So not only does it include the homeless and the people in need on the street, but it helps everybody in the community for Treasure Island. Is there any questions?
What, since you're out on the street on a regular basis, you and Officer Chapooty, what do you see that, other than, you know, approving things, that you would ask from us or even from the businesses? Because I feel like the, you know, the local businesses, the hoteliers, and, you know, just different places are involved in this too, in different aspects. And what would your ideal thing to be if you, what you could see from us or from the businesses?
So the only thing really that I think we're doing from other organizations, speaking of law enforcement, is having a social worker ride along with an officer to provide those right-now resources. Because that still is a roadblock for us. We have to call. We have to make appointments. Some of these peoples don't have phones. We have to make arrangements. And hopefully, they show up and they didn't change their mind. Because at the end of the day, it's up to that person whether or not they want the help. We can't force them to get this help. So really, the only thing that seems to be different, and Chief Barkley said that, is we don't have a social worker riding in the car with us.
Is that something we could do in a cost-effective manner? And do you feel that that would offset? I know that Chief Bars has come and spoken about how much each call costs when we have to transport someone to the hospital. Is there a foreseeable offset of those costs? That it would be something that may not be a hard sell to the community because I can, you know, I can see some pushback on that for, you know, a small town and having a social worker employed and where that might fit in?
Refer to you on that one, Chief.
To be perfectly honest with you, we'd have to run numbers on that and kind of do it on a test basis. I wouldn't recommend anything, you know, everything we're doing right now is trial and error, and we don't want to just throw money at a situation if we know we're not going to get a good return from it because we want to be efficient and effective in everything we do. I would say that, you know, what Darren's talking about is the right now. That's the only thing we're missing. We did inquire about services of it. We did get a price. It was definitely more than we thought, you know, we could handle. We can still look into partnerships with other cities perhaps, if somebody in a part-time basis. But I think that's something where the foundation can come from. If I can just, I'm sorry, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just, it's, you know, kind of what can our part be in this?
Yeah, and in all honesty, as this is still evolving, probably just, and we're going to give you updates and just get direction and make sure, you know, because you guys are hearing from your constituents too. And I hear it too. It's going to be positiveness. And I think Mr. Veltin is an excellent example of a community member who had a definite concern. We met in the lobby of the Police Bar. He met with me. We had very frank discussions on it. And I asked him if he wanted to ride with Officer Chapooty so he could see the issue. Because you can see it when you're driving by to Publix. But until you go out there and start talking and see these are human beings, it's just not, you know, a lot of people, it's out of sight, out of mind. That's not the way to handle this problem. They're human beings. Some of them are veterans. A lot of them are suffering from mental illness. You know, we've discussed these reasons ad nauseam as about why they're out, why the people with mental illness are on the street. But not only did he go out and see the problem and educate himself on it, he's stepping up as a community member, making a very incredibly generous donation. And I have a feeling the way Treasure Island is and what I know about Treasure Island in two years I've been here, there's going to be more people that'll step up and do the same thing if they think they can help these, their fellow, the people that are on, their fellow man and people that are on the streets.
And piggybacking on that sentiment, it's my understanding that some of our homeless do travel up and down the beach as far as Clearwater on the bus. And then they come back. It's my understanding. I had responded to an incident. I just happened to be at Walgreens when it was happening, and I had talked to one of the persons while I was waiting for a response. And it was my understanding from her that she travels up to Clearwater because they can panhandle and get a little more money up there. And then they take the bus down and come down here kind of for relax and relaxation. And I was just taking in the data. But in hearing her, I was thinking it would behoove us to share a social worker with other beach communities if our populations are going back and forth because then a social worker would know them from Treasure Island. And then when they interact with them up in Clearwater, it's the same person. They don't have to relook at the background. They're kind of following them around. So while we're getting out in front of it, it might be a good time to contact other municipalities because, I mean, lo and behold, you know, we have a very generous donator in our city, Mr. Veltin. But maybe somebody in Reddington Beach who has equally is concerned or Clearwater, and these residents are going up and down, will have other donors for the foundation. And maybe this large cost for the social worker can be brought down as we share it with other municipalities because these people are traveling back and forth, these residents without addresses. So it just seems like this is a great time to work collaboratively in that little conversation I had with one resident without a dress, that they are traveling up and down the beaches, and it would be a good time to partner with other beach communities.
That's correct. I agree 100%. And one thing, this whole, purpose of this program is forging partnerships because we know we can't do this alone, and we're literally raising our hand now, especially for, you know, a lot of these, some of these organizations get county tax dollars, and Treasure Island citizens pay county taxes. And we're raising our hand saying, yeah, we need this out here. And they're like, oh, Treasure Island, really? There's a homeless issue? So they're like, we're making first-time contact with them. And like, okay. But we're raising our hand and making sure we're being heard, and that's something that Darren and Sawyer have worked on extensively. And we've built a lot of really successful partnerships in the last few months. And it's basically snowballing. We're getting more and more information. Our program, our LIFT program, has been recognized. There's been some other small municipalities around here that has asked for information on the LIFT program because they have issues in their own area, and they see exactly what we're doing, which is kudos to us and kudos to what we're putting together because this is still really on the ground floor. We're still just working on this. But like I said, we want to find long-term solutions to a very, very difficult issue.
And I think one thing that would be when the, after the initial board, when it's transferred over, whatever the proper term is, from Mr. Veltin and the chiefs to the community, is to try to get somebody who's in a downtown business involved on that board, who has a vested interest in it, and perhaps can, you know, all of our businesses that are down there have interest in it. And, you know, that could be, if we have residents who are willing to step up to that, that would be a huge thing, and perhaps, you know, with some of the funding for it, would be a big part of it too.
So all really great ideas, and I want to thank our staff. They're phenomenal in this effort in trying to help our homeless population and also keeping us all informed and for constantly doing the right thing. I also want to really thank the commission for your constant support in these programs and understanding that there is no silver bullet. It is a combination of trying different things, learning, pivoting, and just evolving. So I want to round out, if I may, some of the things that we want to do in 2022. We're kind of going to take a three-prong approach, just to kind of summarize it. The first prong will be really focusing on a public education component. We're in the process of creating a webpage specific to homelessness, how people can help, kind of describing what our challenges are, talk about our foundation, people to get involved. And so that will be kind of a general frequently asked questions that we're working on, a general landing page for all things, how you can help, finding out more about it, and finding out what the challenges really are. Because I think sometimes not everybody has really gotten exposed to what some of those challenges are in a fortunate way. But there are those challenges, that we have a significant group of people in the United States that really do deal with these challenges all the time. But that would be kind of a public education, and the foundation can kind of work under that arm. The second prong is really taking a look at our code, our city code legislatively, and making sure that it's up to date and that it has things in it that are working for other communities to keep our community as safe as possible, both for everybody and our businesses and all involved, and making sure that they are as up to date as possible and kind of finding out what things work across the state. So that's really a kind of a research endeavor. And then the last prong is really, we have excellent intergovernmental coordination already, but really compounding that. And we have some new leadership at the county, at the human resources. We also have some newer leadership at the Homeless Leadership Alliance, HLA. They refer to themselves, they're going through a little bit of an evolution process. And so we are going to be meeting with those folks at the end of this month and really forging and strengthening the coordination and the relationship that we are building on and just really kind of taking it to the next level and finding out what resources are available to us and helping to connect our liaison, both in Police and Fire Officer Chapooty and Sawyer and the Fire Department to, are there more resources that we're maybe not aware of? And really kind of compounding that. And so that's the three-prong approach that we're going to build upon what we've already established throughout 2022.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. Any questions?
Sounds good.
No, it sounds really good and a nice social media aspect to it and ability for our community to donate. Because as you said, and thank you so much for your more than generous donation to get this started. But our community is always so willing to help, and it draws back to what our community really is. And we're, we care about each other. And that's so important that we look after our weakest link and help them and literally lift them up to getting them the help that they need and also through the VA or wherever we can tie into. But thank you.
And I think it's going to be great to have, particularly the public education piece, I think is really important because I think that's, one of my biggest frustrations is trying to convey everything that we're doing to people that are posting on Nextdoor, posting in some random Facebook group and complaining about how Treasure Island's really just gone horribly wrong, and this problem has just blossomed over the last several years. It's hard to convey all of the information that we all know here and you all know in an easy-to-digest manner. So I think having that landing page on the website with some really digestible information will be really helpful to say, listen, if you're going to complain about this, do your due diligence. Here's the resources. Look into it. Educate yourself about what we can and can't do, what we are doing, before you really go up and go and stir the pot because that doesn't necessarily help the matter. And here's what you can do if you really do want to help. You can get involved. So I think that's really important, and I thank you guys for doing that. Anything else before we, I mean, I think you have very clear consensus to move forward with the foundation and our sincere gratitude for helping us get it started. Do you need anything else?
Yep. I think we're good.
All right. Next is, do we have any public comment? All right, hearing none, we will adjourn our workshop. And we need a 10-minute break to kind of reset the room, get situated. Members of our LPA, please, you can take a seat up here to join us. And I believe there's refreshments in the back to enjoy while we get the room reset. So we'll reconvene shortly after 8:05.